It is six o'clock and I am going to call this meeting to order. And we've already said the pledge and invocation in the first half. So I don't see anything for public comment period. Anybody signed up? Stephie? Okay. Nobody for public comment period? And we're going to move into the public hearing. Alcoholic beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, consider the issuance of a 2020 alcoholic beverage license to San Tran for Saigon Pho, 760 Scranton Road, Suite 100, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines for consumption on premise of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. San Tran, licensee. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the applicant is present and meets the requirements by the ordinance for the issuance of an alcohol license. Mr. Tran?
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone opposed to the license application, if you'll step up to the podium, state your name. Anyone opposed? Anyone in favor that wants to speak in favor? Step up to the podium, state your name. Okay. Seeing none. Commissioners, what do you want to do?
Second up.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor that application signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Mr. Tran, you have your license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran.
Item two, consider the issuance of a 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Levon Williams for Murphy Oil USA Incorporated, DBA Murphy USA, number 7753, 136 Altamont Connector, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a convenience store. Sunday sales permitted. Levon Williams, licensee. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the applicant is present, meets the requirements by the ordinance for the issuance of an alcohol license. Ma'am, if you'd stand up, please.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners?
I offer a motion to approve the application.
Public hearing. Oh. Public hearing. Oh! Oh! Minor technicality there. Thank you. This is a public hearing. See if they're on top of it. Chief?
I was looking out.
They're on top of it. Okay, this is a public hearing. Before we pass this, anyone want to speak against it? Anyone not in favor want to come up and speak? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone in favor that wants to speak? Come up, state your name. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I call, we have a motion. Did we ever have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. You're not Levon Williams, are you?
Miss Williams.
Oh, is that Miss Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Levon?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we got your license. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Williams.
All right. Item three, consider the issuance of a 2020 alcoholic beverage license to Melissa Kaiser for Atlantic Hospitality Adventures, DBA Hampton Inn, St. Simon's Island, 2204 Demery Road, St. Simon's Island, Georgia. The license is to sell malt beverages and wines not for consumption on premise of a hotel retail gift shop. Sunday sales permitted. Melissa Kaiser, licensee. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the applicant is present, meets the requirements by the ordinance for the issuance of alcohol license. Ms. Kaiser, if you could stand up, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone opposed to the issuance of a license, if you'll step up to the podium and state your name? Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. Seeing none. Anyone that wants to speak in favor of the license, step up to the podium, state your name. Okay, seeing none. I'll call the, call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve the application as presented.
Second up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous. Okay, Ms. Kaiser, you have your license. Congratulations. Public hearing, land use. Item four, M4306, 3152 Cypress Mill Road. Consider a request to rezone approximately 1.09 acres at 3152 Cypress Mill Road from the R9 and M9 one-family residential zoning districts to the M9 one-family residential zoning district. The applicant is seeking to place a double-wide mobile home on the site of an existing single-family home. Parcel ID 03-0-03035. Ernest T. Bradham, owner and applicant. Stephie?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM4306, 3152 Cypress Mill Road. The applicant currently has a property that is split zoning. A portion of the property is zoned M9 and a portion is R9. It's, the portion that's zoned M9 was rezoned to M9 from R9 back in 1973. So it's been split zoned since the early 70s. The applicant does want to have the M9 zoning on the entirety of the parcel. He has an older home that he would like to demolish on the property and then put a mobile home in its place. This is the property here on Cypress Mill Road where the star is located. And as you can see, the R9 is coming off of Cypress Mill Road and the rear of the property is the M9 zoning. And here is a survey where the blue area is pointing of the property and showing where the house is located. The Planning Commission did consider this on July 7th and they did unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the rezone. These are your possible actions. And recommended motion is to approve applications ZM4306 as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephie.
Thank you.
Commissioners, have any questions? Okay, no questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
Public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing, sorry. Thank you.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Public hearing. I'm sorry. Man, Lord. This is a public hearing issue and anyone that is opposed to the request, if you'll step up and state your name? Anyone opposed? Okay. Seeing none. Anyone in favor that wants to speak, stand up, come up to the mic and speak. Anyone in favor? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on that one. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application ZM4306 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion? Okay. All right.
Can you hear me on second?
Oh.
I didn't hear that. I had a second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All right, no discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item five, ZM4259, Seaboard Golden Isles Gateway Surface Mine. Consider a request to rezone approximately 193 acres located at 7600 Golden Isles Parkway from Plan Development District to Forest Agriculture. The subject property is within the northwest quadrant of PD ZM3370 and it is currently a surface mining operation. Parcel ID 03-27018, Plant Improvement Company Incorporated, owner and applicant. Stephie?
Thank you. This is ZM4259, Seaboard Golden Isles Gateway Surface Mine Rezone. As the chairman stated, this is currently a surface mining operation. They are zoned PD and they are looking to rezone to a conventional zoning district. The current plan development was amended in 2016 to allow surface mining. So what they're doing now is allowed currently. However, there have been, it was a larger plan development, there have been different ownership changes over the years and so the applicants are really seeking just to clean things up, rezone to a conventional zoning district just to, just to kind of clean things up and have that zoning district in place on their property. So this is the property where the star is located. It's located off the northern end of Golden Isles Parkway. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan does state that it's conservation, but the forest agricultural zoning district is considered an appropriate zoning district in the conservation and future land use area. Here's a survey of the property. Another survey that shows some of the dwelling areas. And this image just show the current surface mining operation that's on the site now. The Planning Commission did consider this on July 7th and they did unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this rezone. These are your possible actions and recommended motion is to approve applications ZM4259 as presented. And I'm happy to answer questions and I know the applicants are here as well tonight if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stephie. Okay, this is a public hearing. Item also, anyone that wishes to speak against this application, step up to the mic. Anyone who wants to speak against the application? Seeing none, anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? Step up to the mic. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? Step up to the mic. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this one. And commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application ZM4259 as presented.
Second. Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you. That is unanimous. Item six, ZM4276, Tanglewood Plan Development District Amendment. Tanglewood Subdivision. Consider a request to amend the Tanglewood Plan Development District GC-2003-22. Master plan to allow changes to the design of 132 proposed lots within Phase Two, Tanglewood Subdivision. Subject property is located at 5382 Highway 99 and 103 Tanglewood Drive. The property is zoned Plan Development District. Parcel ID 03-21119, Jonathan Roberts, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for LSSD, Tanglewood LLC, owner and applicant. Stephie?
Thank you. This is ZM4276, Tanglewood Plan Development District Amendment. And this is Tanglewood Subdivision. So both this agenda item as well as your next one are part of the Tanglewood Plan Development with two different subdivisions. So this property is located where the star is and, so this is Highway 99. This is Tanglewood coming in. So there is currently a first, the first phase, the phase one of Tanglewood has been developed. And then where the star is located is where they would like to do Phase Two. So Tanglewood was part of a plan development that was approved in 2003. There is a very, very detailed master plan that was approved as part of that plan development. As you may know, we have over 400 planned developments in the county and many of them are more general in scope, they're not quite as detailed. This tended, this happened to be a very detailed one that really was almost like a preliminary plat because I think at that time they were planning to develop everything at that, that point in time. So because of that, let me find, so because of that, this is the, this is the master plan. So this was approved in 2003. Just to orient you, this is the property where the red circle is located. This is the property that's in question today. So as they're embarking on Phase Two of the development, they would like to change the lot layout, change the road configuration. There was a pavilion, you know, common area amenities center that was, I'm sorry, a pavilion that was part of a common area that had been proposed and also where the ponds were located does differ between the 2003 master plan and what is actually current, currently out there in Phase One as well as what they would like to do in Phase Two. So because of those changes, under the Plan Development section of the zoning ordinance, it does trigger the requirement to change the master plan. So they have to come back through the whole process as if it was a full rezone of the property. So that is what's before you today. So here is the master plan and then this is what they would like to do on the property. The gray shaded area is the configuration that they would like to do as part of Phase Two. So instead of the circular roads, they are doing some cul-de-sacs. And this image here is just a comparison of the master plan on the top of the screen and then what they're proposing to do on the bottom of the screen. I will note the density, the lot sizes, everything else in the PD text is compliant. It's really just this layout and design of the subdivision. So the Planning Commission did consider this on July 7th and they did unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this. So these are your actions and your recommended motion is to approve application ZM4276 as presented. And I know the applicants are here tonight if you have any questions and I'm happy to answer them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephie. This is a public hearing and anyone that wants to speak against this application, if you'll step up to the mic? Anyone who wants to speak against the application? Seeing none, anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? Step up to the mic. Anyone speak in favor, please step up. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item. And commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to state, if I can get my voice where it can be heard, I'd like to state that at one point, a little over 10 years ago, I was involved in the Tanglewood Plan Development, but I have no current ownership, I have no affiliations, I have no family members or anyone else that's involved in this development at this time. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve application ZM4276 as presented.
Second. Okay, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Commissioners, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, item seven, ZM4382, Tanglewood Plan Development District Amendment, Autumn's Wood Subdivision. Consider a request to amend the Tanglewood Plan Development District GC-2003-22. Master plan to allow changes to the design of the subdivision proposed as Phases Two and Three, Autumn's Wood Subdivision. The approximately 54 acre subject property is located at 5122 and 5156 Highway 99. The property is zoned Plan Development District. Parcel ID 03-18602, Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated, agent for Regency Land Group, owner. Stephie?
Thank you. This is ZM4382. This is Tanglewood Plan Development District and Autumn's Wood Subdivision. So this is the same plan development that you heard in the last application, but it is a different subdivision. So here is Highway 99. This is Autumn's Wood Drive that comes in. Where you see the parcel numbers listed, this is part of Phase One. There are homes out, there are some homes out there and others are existing platted lots that some of them have not been built on or homes are currently under construction. The star on the right-hand side of the screen, this is their proposed Phase Two. And then this larger piece here on the left is their proposed Phase Three. And similar to the last, let's see, similar to the last application, the master plan was very detailed and had a very specific lot layout configuration. So some of the location of the ponds, the lots and the roads were very specific. And so where the yellow areas are pointed, this is what was proposed in the master plan in 2003. And then, let's see, this is a survey of the existing lots that are out there. And this is the proposed master plan of what they would like to do in Phase Two and Three. So here's just a comparison. The top is the master plan. The blue square is Phase Two, as the master plan indicates. The red rectangle is Phase Three. And then on the bottom of the screen is what they would like to do as Phase Two and Three. So Phase Two, they are showing the configuration of lots and a cul-de-sac. Phase Three, they have not yet designed out. They would like to leave that open at this time for, for future design and that would of course be part of a preliminary plat in the future. So the Planning Commission did unanimously, unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this reason on July 7th. These are your possible actions and recommended motion is to approve application ZM4382 as presented. And the applicant, our representative is here tonight and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Okay, Stephie.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone opposed to the application request, if you would step up to the mic and state your name, please? Anyone opposed? Okay. Anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application? Step up to the mic. State your name, please? Anyone in favor? Okay, I'm going to close the floor for the public comment. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to weigh in here. I, I am involved in this particular project, so I would recuse myself from any vote on this action.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Neal.
So, Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve, approve proposed zoning as presented.
Okay. ZM4382?
ZM4382.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Booker. Do you have a motion? Did I hear a s- ......................................................................................................................................................................................................
So, Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve, approve proposed zoning as presented.
Okay. ZM4382?
ZM4382.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Booker. Do you have a motion? Did I hear a s- ...................................................... Did I hear a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
That is five.
And we have one recusal. Mr. Attorney, is that the same as abstaining or is it not? Just a recusal? Abstaining? Abstaining from, okay. Thank you, sir. Item eight. ZM 4274. Nick's Lane Senior Living. Consider a request to rezone approximately 17.86 acres in the vicinity of Granville Nick's Lane and Nick's Lane from the F.A., R12, M12 and R20. One-family residential and highway commercial zoning districts to the medium residential and highway commercial zoning districts. The applicant is seeking to create an 80-unit multifamily senior living residential development with associated commercial development. Parcel ID 0302511, 0302512, 0302513, 0302516, 0302517, 03-02518, 03-02521 and a portion of 03-02515. Jonathan McDeal, agent for Hillpoint LLC, doing business as Coastal Club Developer LLC. Charles and Gloria Cooley and Retha, Retha Jean Morgan, owners. Steffi?
Great, thank you. Uh, so the applicant is, uh, looking to rezone, uh, this property to do a multifamily, um, 80-unit senior living residential development. Uh, the site is a commercial future land use category, um, that is, it's commercial is a future land use category. Uh, but in the commercial land use category, they do allow multifamily and mixed use. So it does fit into the comprehensive plan, future land use map. This is the zoning map, uh, for the property. And this, uh, is, uh, the proposed project. Uh, so it's multifamily and they are, but they are showing that they would be, um, one-story units primarily for, for seniors. Uh, so the 80-unit apartment, apartment complex would have direct access to Altama Avenue and will bypass Nick's Lane and Granville Nick's Lane local roads. The applicant has submitted a site plan application where a lot of these details will be fleshed out more. Uh, the application, um, is currently in our review process and, uh, following a, a decision on the rezone, uh, we will schedule the site plan for a future, um, Mainland Planning Commission meeting. The property is adjacent to Hercules Superfund Site. And so the EPA there has, um, stated that the site contamination does not currently threaten people living and working near the site. Uh, the Planning Commission did consider this application on July 7th and they did unanimously recommend approval of it. And the applicant's, uh, representative is here if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer as well, thank you.
Stephanie, was that a unanimous vote?
Uh, yes, it was, sir.
Thank you, Steffi. Okay, um, public hearing. Uh, anyone want to speak against this application request? If you'll step up to the mic. State your name. Anyone want to speak against the application request? Okay, seeing none? Anyone want to speak in favor of the application request? Step up to the mic. Anyone want to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none? Uh, we'll close the floor to the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, do you need to recuse yourself if you qualify for residency? Huh?
My hearing's so bad, I think he was talking about you.
What do you all want to do with this?
I offer a motion. We approve ZM 4274 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Okay. Item nine. ZM 4310. Capital Square Plan Development District Amendment. Consider a request to amend the Capital Square Plan Development District. ZM 3529. To add an 11.625 acre section, currently zoned forest agricultural, to the planned development. Parcel ID 03-03351. Ridge Enterprises and Georgia Land Group, owners and applicants. Steffi?
Thank you. This is ZM 4310, Capital Square Plan Development. So the Capital Square Plan Development, um, is comprised of several parcels um, off of Capital Square Drive that comes off of Perry Lane, just north of exit 20, or, I'm sorry, exit 38. So the parcels that have been developed in this PD are currently the La Quinta Hotel, um, there's a vacant parcel and then there's also proposed Avid Hotel on one of the parcels as well. Uh, this larger piece is what's under consideration tonight. So as you can see, a portion of the property is located in the PD and then this, uh, southern portion is located in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District. So they do want to bring this Forest Agricultural Zoning District portion into, into this PD so they can allow the other uses that are allowed in this PD. And then in addition to pulling that into the PD, they also want to amend the PD to add, um, self-storage units as an allowed use in the PD. And, uh, the, uh, the future land use category is considered commercial, so this meets, uh, the comprehensive plan. So there is a mix of uses that are allowed currently. Um, this, this portion of the PD is highway commercial, throughway commercial uses. Um, this back portion of the PD is, um, highway commercial and medium residential uses. So there, um, have been some, as the staff, when reviewing this project, there are some additional, um, items that we do want evaluated, um, at, at a future time when development does come into the site. So whether that's site plan or preliminary plat, whatever the first step is. Uh, we do want to have, um, the Capital Square, um, looked at in terms of, um, traffic coming into this PD off of Perry Lane and, um, so that would be looked at, at a future development point. Uh, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend, um, their, at their meeting of July 7th, approval of this with no conditions. And these are your possible actions and recommended motion is to approve application ZM 4310 as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I do not see the applicant here tonight but I can help out if there's anything that comes up.
Okay. Thank you, Steffi.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak against this application? If you'll step up to the mic. Anyone want to speak against? Okay, anyone want to speak in favor of the application? Chief, you want to speak in favor of the application? I think everybody's asleep out there. Hi. Hi, just checking. Okay, I'm gonna close the floor. Commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve application ZM 4310 as presented.
Second.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ZM 4310 signify by raising your right hand. Okay. That is approved unanimously. That's out on the agenda. Mr. Attorney, we've got any executive session? Nothing for executive session. Gentlemen, you all get an A tonight. This meeting is adjourned.